So I am going to start this recording.
Recording in progress.
Say hello, let's roll call in for tonight's meeting. Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. Welcome to the January 24th School Committee Meeting. Oh, there's the mayor. Right, we're still rolling in. So let's let her connect. Good evening, Mayor. We're rolling in, so you're just in time. You would be the last person to roll call in.
Mayor Les Chappell here.
Okay, welcome. All right. So do we have any correspondence?
I have no correspondence to report and I have no gifts to report.
All right. And as Dr. Leclerc said, Mackenzie is probably avidly studying for finals. So we do not have a student representative update. This may be a very short meeting. Okay, then we go straight on to public comment. I'm going to ask that if anybody would like to speak, to please introduce themselves. And then limit yourself to three minutes. So we're opening right now, so I'm going to scan for about a minute. And see if we have anybody who would like to speak. Going once. Going twice. And I do not see anybody to recognize, so we are going to close public speak. All right, Dr. Leclerc, time for your superintendent update.
Thank you, everyone. We do have a presentation tonight. Jody will be presenting in a moment, but just before Jody begins, I just want to recognize Sarah Mochack and thank her and thank Julian Levin. We have the Department of Education on site this week, today and tomorrow, doing tiered focus monitoring. You know, in school districts, we're continuously monitored by the Department of Education. So this is a check that happens every six years. And so we're undergoing that this week. It's been a lot of preparation work. Because a lot of the review that the Department of Education does occurs before they ever step foot on your campus. There's a lot of materials that we need to provide to them, a lot of information. And then they come onsite, do a ran, you know, a records review. They've toured our buildings. They were very impressed by our schools today. It'll be a day of mostly interviews tomorrow. And then we'll expect a report probably later on in the spring, but Sarah has been working tirelessly on this. Julian Levin has been supporting Sarah on this. They've been working really hard on it. So I just want to acknowledge both of them and thank both of them for their hard work. It's always, you know, kind of an above and beyond thing. And it totally disrupts everything else that you have going on when you're getting ready to have the Department of Education on site. So I acknowledge that it's a lot of work. So tonight, we have another rock star in our community, in our school community that's here to do a presentation. Jody Alitalo is our instructional literacy coach or literacy coordinator at Mountain View. She's going to be doing a presentation tonight about our literacy program. This is in line with some of the feedback that we've received from the school committee about learning more about the curriculum initiatives that we have going on in the district. And this really speaks to our efforts to differentiate instruction and providing equity, which is part of our value system. So Jody has been a real asset to the East Hampton Public Schools. She's been, she's served here for many years. And she works collaboratively with teachers every single day at Mountain View. And she has great relationships with students as well. So Jody, I turn it over to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. I am excited to be here tonight. And I have a lot of content, but I'll be concise and clear, hopefully. If at any point you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Okay? Cindy, would it be possible for you to enable the screen share?
Already done.
Super. Okay, great. All right. So let me just queue up my slide deck. Because I love the visuals.
So do we.
Okay, all right. So this image is a good starting point, I think. Because the last time I was presenting to school committee, we were a district that was really grounded in the reading recovery model of instruction for teaching early readers. And we were at this kind of this point in our, in our journey where we were looking at our data. And we saw some, some things that we, we knew we had to change. We knew, we knew we had to do, to do better. And so I wanted to talk to you about my own journey to bring knowledge and understanding and change to the East Hampton educators. And thus impact our, our teaching for all learners. So it was about three years ago before COVID that I attended a workshop at Bay Path. And it was led by a woman named Joan Sedida. Joan runs this organization called the Keys to Literacy, and it was a foundational skills workshop. And I brought along the reading specialist that I worked with. And in that workshop, it was really clear to me that we were not addressing some of those hidden skills in our teaching of reading. And at that training, I met the program director for Bay Path. Her name is Janet Stratton. And if you know the reading world, Janet is a key player in the region. And Janet and I talked about her program at Bay Path. And she has a program that is an evidence-based, science of reading-aligned curriculum. And she kind of enticed me to go back to school and get an advanced graduate degree. So I am in the, almost to the end of my program. It's a 48 credit program. It's pretty massive. But I committed to doing that program because I felt an urgency to learn as much as I could to really shift our teaching in the right direction. And as a result of that program, I now have my Orton Gillingham credentials, which gives me this understanding that I can share with teachers and it really helps me coach and support teachers to make really solid instructional decisions for kids. I've also been connected with the Carolina Day School, which is an organization in North Carolina that my teacher leader is from. And she is a resource that I lean on all the time. I was part of the Mass Literacy Network Coaching Network last year. And that was an incredible experience to be, you know, online with all the coaches across the state. And we shared best practices and assessment tools. And we learned a tremendous amount from the consultants at the Hill Institute. And then most recently, the Reading Circuit acknowledged the work we were doing in East Hampton. It was, it was Martha Wiley at Desi who nominated me to get this trailblazer credentials or whatever. It was wonderful. And so we're moving in the right direction. But I wanted to explain tonight what I now have a much deeper understanding of. And that is called the Science of Reading. So I want to first kind of define the science of reading. And essentially, it is that reading instruction is delivered in a systematic, sequential, prescriptive, diagnostic, multisensory manner. So that students are getting explicit teaching of the foundational skills needed to become a reader. So what you're looking at on the screen is called Hollis Scarborough's Reading Rope. And this is a model that is based on the seminal research of, of, of reading process. And the idea, it's, there's another kind of equation at the bottom of your screen that is a really, really kind of easy, easier understanding. Essentially, the brain learns to read by pairing word recognition skills and language comprehension. So we are not wired to read. We are wired to speak. And so through the process of teaching children in a really explicit way, how to unlock the sounds from the letters they see in print is reading. And that is the settled science. That is the evidence. And it's been 50 plus years of research that's really now grounded in neuroscientific kind of brain imaging. So this is, this is it. This is how the brain reads. So we have moved away from a theory that, that was flawed, essentially. And so a theory of reading instruction that is no longer deemed evidence-based. And it is because what we now know is that the reader does not interact with the text using these cueing systems that we, we would teach children to use. That, that that's not how skilled reading works in the brain. And so we now have a much clearer understanding of how we can teach children to read. And essentially, we work on those two kind of, two core skills, word recognition through teaching them the sounds and the print. And we work on the language comprehension through oral and auditory interactions. So those two parts of the reading rope are what we work on so that we can develop skilled readers. So Mark Seidenberg wrote a book called Language at the Speed of Sight. So if you're really interested in this topic, it's an incredible book. And this just really spoke to me, this quote. He wrote that one of the most consistent findings in all of education research is that children become better readers when they get explicit and systematic phonics instruction. So that reading war that has been going on for years is no longer because we now have the evidence that tells us that the brain matches spoken language with print through explicit instruction. So you'll see my model there. And those are the three parts of the brain that, that readers that, that create those neural pathways because they're not there. You have to forge them. So what does this mean for East Hampton? Well, we've done a lot of shifting. Right around the time that I attended that training was when we shut down and we were, we were remote. And at that time, I was in consultation with collaborative classroom to adopt an intervention called SIPS. And SIPS stands for systematic instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, and sight words. And SIPS became something that I piloted online when we were remote and did a lot of training. And we adopted this program for our Tier Two intervention in replace, replacing reading recovery. And it was a, a big change. It was a really big change. But what it allowed us to do is to reach more learners. But we didn't know who we needed to reach until we adopted a screening. So we have the STAR screening, which has two components. It has an early literacy screening for grades one and two. And it has a reading screening for grades three to five. And within the STAR screening, there are those subtests that the reading specialists use to measure those foundational skills that indicate whether or not a student has the potential to struggle with reading. So we have these diagnostic tools that allow us to make decisions about who needs that Tier Two intervention. This year, we adopted a different screening for kindergarten. It's called the Early Bird. And it was developed by Dr. Nadine Gabb at Harvard. And she has a clinic at Boston Children's Hospital. And she's been doing the neuroimaging and created a diagnostic kind of gamified screening tool for pre-K to two. We're trying it with K this year. That really gives us this data that says, tells us, kind of points to a potential for reading challenge. And because we know that that systematic explicit instruction in sounds and print matching them for children allows for struggling readers to, to learn to read more successfully. So we are, we are enabling kind of those systems of the brain to work better. So it's pretty exciting. So we, we now have tiered instruction. We have, we have Tier Two intervention in kindergarten. Tamara Geffen is our kindergarten reading specialist. And she's working pretty exclusively with, starting with those sounds and getting automaticity and recognizing them. And building in that kind of, I call it the Velcro, to then stick their letters to. So it's pretty exciting. So we've adopted some programming that is providing that structured literacy, that very systematic instruction. And at Tier One, which is for all children, our core programming is, is teaching children to read in a, in the same, in the same manner. So the collaborative classroom out of California is our programming. And they have the Being a Reader program for all children. And the SIPS program for that Tier Two intervention. And they are aligned. So what's beautiful about it is that if a child needs more support, we can put them into SIPS so that they have a more intense dose of really targeted instruction. So we're using the same kind of scope and sequence. But for some kids, they need that everyday dose of reading instruction. And they need it to be done in a multi, more multisensory way. They need it to be done in a small group. And we're, we are now able to do that because we have a program. And so our reading specialists, they're working incredibly hard to lift all learners. And by starting early, we are able to intervene and make a huge difference. So that is our programming across those tiers. Another exciting thing we are doing is that we have a Science of Reading PLC. And the PLC has 28 members. We have teachers, counselors, school psychologists, parent educators. And this week, we're studying reciprocal teaching, which is an evidence-based strategy for comprehension. But we study different components of that reading rope. I added this quote because it's powerful. "At researchers estimate that 95% of children can be taught to read." There are some constraints for students who have some challenges with listening comprehension and reasoning. But overall, 95% of children can learn to read. And this is coming from David Kilpatrick, who is, you know, the seminal researcher around that, that brain-based sound work. It's pretty exciting. So as, as the Science of Reading PLC, we see it in the classroom, how this is transferring over. So a couple of pictures, Tamara's working with some kindergartners in this image. They're sorting sounds as voice on or voice off, the voiced or unvoiced, which is really powerful. And Emily Messer has in her classroom a sound wall. So she can show the students the place and manner of articulating those sounds. Because those vowels are tricky. They can, they have a mnemonic that's anchoring them and they can see the visual of how your mouth is positioned. It makes a huge difference. And then the quote on the top is from one of the kids that I teach. Mrs. Alitalo, does the sound have a voice off? Like the and he was just curious. So it's building, it's building this awareness that our, our reading comes from matching our speech with the printed word. And that, that's the cognitive work of the science of reading. It is cognitive. We're really explicit and clear. Yeah. So it's really neat. Okay, last slide. I hope I'm not taking too long. Next steps. So the reading rope, the language comprehension strand has lots of facets. And one of the things we still need to work towards is structured word inquiry. Some people may call it spelling or orthography. But we need a systematic structured word inquiry system. We have assessment tools that we can use. And teachers are amazing. They're resourceful and they, they know what their students need using the assessment, but we need some consistency, some vertical alignment with our spelling curriculum. Writing. So we have a process writing program called Being a Writer. And it gives kids lots of opportunity to write for different purposes and different audiences. But we see lagging structure. We see structure at the sentence level that's really weak. And so this year, I brought Framing Your Thoughts, which is from Language Circle Project Read to Tier Two. And we've been working with it in Tier Two. And I've been doing some coaching with it in Tier Three to teach really the kind of, the real kind of concrete structure of compounding complex sentences. And then knowledge building. So you're seeing a picture of our literacy closet. So we had our literacy closet organized in an alphabetic kind of system, an alpha system, which was aligned with the reading recovery model, the founder's seminal kind of theory. All of those books were vetted and moved from the three elementary schools. And the reading specialist and I reorganized the library to be a knowledge building library. So we have beautiful programming that teaches kids to read. We have decodable texts for them to practice what we're teaching them. And here, we have this literacy closet with books that are organized for them to learn more through reading. So we have, we've made this pretty dramatic shift. But there's more to that. We want to really try to tie in social studies and science standards and and work more collaboratively, collaboratively with, with Megan, our new STEAM teacher to really bring literature and nonfiction texts into her space too. So really helping develop students' understanding of the world around them through, through reading. And I just thought I would add, add this, and Dr. Leclerc mentioned equity. And the science of reading is absolutely about equity. You know, it's hard to say we, we weren't doing what, what we, we didn't know better, how to reach all the readers. And now we do. And so we're committed to that. I'm committed to that. And, and it's pretty great to have a team of reading specialists who are working collaboratively to make sure that we we're all, we're all doing what's best for kids. And in terms of my coaching and my professional development that I provide, that is all in service to this, the settled science that, you know, this is how kids learn to read. And, and we're going to do that in East Hampton. So that's about it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Jody.
Any questions? Any comments?
Yes, please. Questions are great.
I mean, I will say as a special ed teacher, reading and, and all of this is just a passion of mine. I do this work even at the high school with my students, so it's never too late. And this just looks so exciting. And I will, I will read that book. It sounds really good.
Awesome. Great.
Megan?
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your efforts to both you, Jody and Julianne and everyone who's working on this. It's just, it's really exciting to see great evidence-based curriculum. And it sounds amazing. Thanks for telling us about it.
Thank you so much. And I want to recognize my colleague Morgan Jones, who's here tonight. She is also a reading specialist at Mountain View and also an Orton Gillingham practitioner. So we, we're the OG. We call it that.
Thank you to all of you.
You are so welcome. It is our pleasure. We love to teach reading. We love it.
Thank you so much, Jody. I was just wondering with your experience, have you come in contact with students in our district who are limited in English? And that contributes to their problems with literacy?
Indeed. So what's, what's important to, when you think about the Scarborough, Scarborough's reading rope is that you have the language comprehension and you have the word recognition. So without something to comprehend, it makes it very difficult to, to be able to read. However, the sound system can still be explicitly taught to children simultaneously while they're learning the language. So that's the beautiful thing about it, is that we have a code-based language that is phonetic. So we, we are able to support those students to learn the code while they're also getting instruction in language. And this, this year, we have some students who speak Spanish and we were able to acquire some programming to do the sound work in, in their native language so that they can have that connection between the meaning and those sounds in, in, in Spanish. So that's been an awesome intervention for students in our YAL population. Ben?
Yeah, it sounds fantastic. I'm excited to, to follow up on this and see how, how it goes down the road. It seems pretty new still. So I'm, I was just curious if you've seen results yet, or if you, or how do you know if, if the program's working, that kind of stuff? Like, are you measuring it or evaluating what goes?
Definitely. So we have a lot of data from the STAR assessments that we use. We have data from the Early Bird. In addition to that, we have program-centered data. So because it's systematic and sequential, we can see how students move through the program. So essentially, every two, within two weeks, every child is, is progress monitored. So there's that ongoing data. And so for students who aren't making progress in, in SIPS, the reading specialists consult with one another and we make instructional adjustments. Sometimes those adjustments are regrouping students. Sometimes we're adding more, more work with phonological or phonemic awareness. We have some other kind of informal assessments that we use to make those decisions. So what we're doing is we're really trying to be prescriptive for students. And so by having screening in place on, on a regular basis, we're able to catch students who perhaps, maybe they can read, but their fluency is impaired. Right? So we can, we can monitor all of that. And we have those programs that we can then prescribe for students. Whether they're working with a reading specialist or they're working on a computer-based program. So we, we are seeing some good gains then. You know, COVID was tricky and, you know, remote instruction was hard for a lot of our learners. So we're still trying to remediate some of those gaps.
For sure. I, I imagine this is not going to happen this year. You know, it's going to take a while before we know what's what, but.
Yeah, it's hard to tease apart, but we are starting to see our number. Yeah, it's hard to tease apart. Um, but we are starting to see our numbers going down in tier two a little bit. Um, and that's usually a good sign that we're we're doing things well.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to thank Jody again and Morgan. Um, I'm in meetings with Jody every other week and Jody is such a cheerleader about literacy. Not only is she a cheerleader, but she also steeps so much of her conversation and data, which I really appreciate. So um, I'd like to thank them for coming tonight. And Jody, thank you for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you so much for having me. Um.
Shannon, I think I think Shannon had before you leave, I'm just not wanting you to say goodbye. Shannon, did you have something you wanted to say? You're you're muted.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask if we could get a copy of the presentation?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Jody. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
Now, Jody, you can finish what you were gonna say. Sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, there I saw that Sarah Mochek's quote is up there. Do the best you can until you know better. Um, and that's Maya Angelou. And that's really what it's about. You know, um, we as teachers are learners. We have to be and we have to evolve and change and shift and adjust. And data is a is where we we gain insights into how things are going. So um, I'm committed to that and um and I'm I'm proud of the work we're doing in East Hampton.
Well, thank you. Thank you both for coming. This was great, very exciting. All right, ready to move on. Um, now Nick is not here. And what I have for your director of business services is there's no personnel update and no finance update. So we're going on to school committee reports and discussion. And uh finance subcommittee is up first.
Yeah, thank you. So um, we are proceeding with the FY twenty four budget. Um, that is in process with the superintendent and the business um director. Um, so they are working with their leadership and team and developing that. Um, we will be having our first subcommittee meeting. Uh, goodness. The ninth, the thirteenth, what day was that? Um, it is going to be up on the website. Do you remember, Cindy?
I I want to say it's the seventh, but I could be wrong.
Um, I'll find it. And so we will be, yeah, so we will be meeting um. Uh, no, it is going to be the thirteenth. It's Monday, the thirteenth at four thirty PM. Um, so if people are interested uh in coming, that is something that is open to the public. Um, and we will be, you know, looking into the budgets and starting to delve into that first with sort of the overview of our enrollment and operating uh overall budget and then getting into the specifics. Um, the first meeting will be Mountain View and high school. And then the second meeting um will be um focused on the special education program and the district wide funding. So um, we'll go through a couple of subcommittee meetings to review all that stuff and be bringing it back out um to the full committee at the end of March. So in our second meeting in March. So that is the current plan. Um, and we'll keep people updated as we go, but please, if you are interested, you're welcome to attend.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a policy update?
We are working on trying to come up with a date of the thirtieth, I believe it was. Allison, do you remember? Was it the thirtieth?
Yes, we're you you proposed the thirtieth, which is next Monday.
Okay. I will send everything over to everyone else in the group um as soon as I get it from Sue.
Sounds good. All right. So moving right along under other, the first thing I want to say is just to let the public know we are uh in full swing with our superintendent search. And uh at things are going to be speeding up pretty quickly and then it will begin to get turned over to the school committee to take off. But right now I'm really excited that um things are going well for the search team. So I thank everybody who's on that search team. Do we have another other? Laurie?
Yes, um, I had a an inquiry from a constituent who also happens to be a friend of mine. So she reached out because she had sent Dr. Leclerc an email three weeks ago and never heard an answer. So I just um thought I'd bring it to the attention of the committee just because you were on the building committee. And I have no idea about the answer. So the Little League State Championship was won by a group of boys that were in middle school at the time in two thousand and seventeen. Excuse me. This banner is part of our town history, yet it is not displayed anywhere. What are the chances it could proudly be displayed in the new Mountain View School Gymnasium similar to how the high school displays its banners? I don't know if you talked about things like that in the building committee, if there is a place in the gym to have such a banner and how it could be brought into consideration.
I think we could bring it to the next building committee meeting. It's not something that I would recommend at this time. I think because we have so many teams that operate outside of Mountain View School. And if we do it for one, then we really need to be fair and kind of do it for all. And so I think that that would um really be a lot coming at us, particularly the building wasn't even open at that time. And we have historically, we've taken all those things from Whitebrook and they've just been kind of put away, you know, so um they're not necessarily on display right now. So twenty seventeen was a significant uh number of years before the opening of Mountain View. So it wouldn't be something that I would recommend at this point. But I'm happy to bring it to the building committee for a future meeting.
That's fine. It's just she didn't get an answer. So I felt that it needed to be brought up. And I did mention, I did mention that it was a team that wasn't a middle school team like the high school teams have banners up for high school teams. I did say that, even if many or most of the students were middle school students. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Ben?
Uh, just quickly, the equity committee met um and I was there and it was really nice to be back with that crew. Um, we had an initial discussion about uh doing an equity audit of the curriculum. Uh, and I'm very excited to see where that goes. Um, there's a pretty great talk about how uh children's books, the the number of children's books that are written by white people, uh, sometimes even about um black experience or BIPOC experience is a little bit disturbing and problematic and trying to find ways to uh work with that issue. But um, yeah, it was good and and uh it feels it feels like there's some energy there. One of the one of the questions was how to get more people to come. Um, the best way to communicate to folks is a question we need to, I think, think about more. But um, just wanted to let everybody know that that is all that is that is on. I am back in there and I'm excited.
Thank you. Dr. Leclerc?
Since it's other, I just wanted to um let everyone know that I did um call an early dismissal for tomorrow. The message went out to staff and families. We'll get it out on our social media, but the weather is expected to begin at noon time tomorrow and be particularly bad at around three o'clock. So I think pretty much everyone in the local area, including a lot of the larger school districts in the area, will be doing an early dismissal tomorrow. So just encourage people to check that out on WWLP and um or make sure that they check their messages.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Then we'll go on to our action items. Megan?
Right. Uh, I am making a motion to approve the school payroll dated one twelve twenty twenty three in the amount of five hundred and sixty five thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars and twenty two cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Megan? Merritt?
Aaron Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated one twelve twenty twenty three in the amount of three hundred and twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty six cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Megan?
Harvey, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Oh, the mayor. Excuse me. Oh, my goodness, I missed the mayor on that. Did I miss you on the first one too?
Yes, my connection is starting to go bananas. So I didn't know if you said some. So I I've I say yes to this one.
Okay. And were you here for the um the school payroll for five hundred and sixty five thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars and twenty two cents?
Yes, I was. And I I vote yes on that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry that somehow I lost you and now I got you back. Um, okay, um, next one.
I motion to approve the authorization to open a revolving gift account, which will benefit Mountain View School with donations to be used for grades K through five only.
I second that.
Thank you. Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, I.
Megan?
Harvey, I.
Aaron Goldstein, I.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Last one, I make a motion to approve the out of state field trip request for EHS to Manchester, Connecticut on four twenty eight twenty twenty three.
Dr. Leclerc, could you give a little bit more background on this field trip possibly?
I can. I'm just going to read you the message from um Mr. Demento, who's the teacher for the program. Um, this is uh to take a group of students from East Hampton High School to Great Path Academy in Manchester, Connecticut on April twenty eighth during regular school hours. For the second year in a row, the tenth grade English classes have participated in a program titled MAPS, which stands for Music and Poetry Synchronized. This program links suburban schools with urban schools with the goal of collaborating on poetry and music. And through this collaboration, to foster greater understanding between students with differing backgrounds. Students from Mr. Demento's English class have written and submitted different forms of original poetry to be sent to Great Path Academy. And students at Great Path will then collaborate with EHS students via Zoom to transform their poetry into original works of music. And on April twenty eighth, they will be um having a final performance of the student poetry and music collaboration. In previous years, this has been accomplished through video. Um, this year we have the opportunity to perform in a live setting. So they're very excited to have this opportunity and it would be approximately fourteen to sixteen students. Does that help?
That is exciting.
Can you bring them up here? I want to see the show.
That sounds like a great opportunity.
Are you going to be able to tape it?
I'm sure they will videotape the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it sounds Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, great. Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Laurie? Laurie Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Aaron Goldstein, I.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Excellent. Okay, our next meeting dates. Uh, our regular meeting will uh will be February seventh, March fourteenth, March twenty eighth and tentatively on March twenty eighth, uh, it will be the budget public hearing. So now we need to roll call into an executive session. I thank everybody for being here. Um, pursuant to MGL uh three thirty A, so not three thirty, thirty A, conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining on litigation with teachers association and to conduct collective bargaining with non-union personnel. The committee is not expected to return to regular sessions. So we are going to roll top call into executive session and say good night to everybody. Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, good night.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, good night.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, buenas noches.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
Merritt?
Aaron Goldstein, good night.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, good night.
And Cindy Kuzensky, good night. And we will see you all in the executive session. School, the members of the mayor.